I'd like to call to order the Human Service Agency Commission Special Meeting of Thursday, February 11th. It is now 9:35, 9:34 a.m. And I'd like to, on our roll call, all commission members are present, other than Reed Assemble, who has, is getting the vaccination at 9:30 this morning, which is very much an excused absence. And I don't think that Darshan Singh is online now, but we're expecting him. So I'm going to move forward to the adoption of the agenda. Can I have a motion for the adoption of the, of the agenda?
So move.
Second. There's all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. And I'd like to have item three is an adoption of the January 28th regular meeting minutes. Can I have a motion?
Adoption.
I, I move adoption with one correction that I did note lately last night, late last night. Page four, one, two, three, four, fifth paragraph, second line, it says historically due. And I hope I said historically dear to the heart.
Okay, so noted, and a change will be made.
About putting this, the whole screen.
This one?
No, no.
But Darshan is here. Good morning, Darshan.
So I move, I move amendments with that correction.
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Aye.
So.
Aye.
But no, don't. Full screen?
Now moving on to item four, our executive director's report.
I don't know why you're not there. I don't understand it.
Thank you, President Khan. Good morning, commissioners. I'm going to go ahead and make sure you can hear me okay, and then start with just an update on COVID. Because we had a meeting just two weeks ago. There's not, thankfully for COVID, there hasn't been a big change. We're pretty stable. My report will be a little brief, a little more brief than normal. So in terms of COVID, the eight metrics that I think I mentioned every meeting that we track, we're now, we're five in the green, two in the yellow. So we're 100% green on healthcare system capacity in terms of hospitalizations, acute care, and ICU bed capacity, which is understandable, given the lower rate of new cases. That rolling number, again, this is a seven-day rolling average of case positives. We're at a little over 16 per 100,000. When we were in surge three, we were at a peak of about 46 per 100,000. So we've declined significantly, and we've declined quickly, which has really been sort of the nature of the pattern of the disease since its beginning, you know, quick acceleration to spike, and then a pretty quick decel to, to a lower, a more manageable disease. Now, you know, I'm going to echo my colleagues in the Health Department. It's not a reason to get complacent. A fourth surge can happen quickly. A little bit of concern from super bowl parties, a little bit of concern for President's Weekend, this upcoming weekend, and a little bit of concern of complacency and not, not being vigilant about wearing masks. There's the new variant that spreads much easier. It's now appeared in California, in the Bay Area. And then, of course, with outdoor dining opening up, there's just more activity out in the community. And so everyone, please, continue to be vigilant on masking and distancing. So we don't have that fourth surge, which we are, of course, preparing for within the branch, preparing for another isolation and quarantine hotel potentially, should we need that to relieve the hospital of any potential surge. But right now, we're looking good in terms of the numbers, which is great, of course. And the other big, big sort of COVID issue is vaccine and vaccination rollout. And San Francisco is really, really doing a great job at this point. You know, obviously, there were hiccups at the beginning statewide, nationwide, and a little bit in San Francisco. But when you look at our utilization rate of vaccines now, let me just give you some numbers real quick so you can sort of, kind of get a sense of scale. To date, well, this is yesterday. So as of yesterday, 103,210 San Franciscans have been vaccinated. And within that 100, over 100,000, over half are 65 years of age and older, and almost a quarter are 75 and older. So we're reaching the age population that we need to reach. San Francisco in total, so this is both through multi-county sort of HMOs, as well as San Francisco directly. We've received 232,000 vax, vaccines. 114,000 have been administered, reserved for first, or have been given for first dose. 114,000 first dose to people, and then 37,000 second dose. So when you look at that, we're at about 66% utilization. But the way the Health Department is committing the vaccine to second doses, when you look at the 76,000 plus that are committed for second doses, we're actually at 99% administered and committed in terms of vaccine. So sort of the story of the nation, the state sitting on a lot of vaccine, not getting into people's arms, is not the story in San Francisco. And as you probably read in the, in the paper, seen on the news, the mass vaccination site at Moscone, as well as the one at City College, are really helping us reach that, that vaccination saturation, if you will. We continue to work though, in sort of an environment that's, well, it's fluid, but it's also one where we're working with limited information and late information, where we don't know until perhaps a day before, or the beginning of the week, how much vaccine we'll have for that week. So it makes it very hard to plan, of course. Give you an example, the City College mass site had to close for two days this week because they just didn't have any vaccine. And so appointments unfortunately have to be canceled and rescheduled. So, but, but you know, the Health Department in partnership with, you know, HSA, of course, and DEM and others, you know, I think are really doing, doing a good job, given, given a lot of the difficulties in planning and execution. So shifting gears, just what's going on federally and a lot, and I'm not going to talk impeachment, that doesn't affect us, well, not directly, but I will talk what Congress is trying to do to support us. So the House gave final approval on Friday to the, to the budget blueprint for Biden, President Biden's $1.9 trillion stimulus. And those of you who are sort of wonky in terms of the political, or the sort of political congressional process and getting things through, this is going to be moved through what's called budget reconciliation, rather than through a standalone bill. And the reason that is, is because it's not subject to filibuster, which means we only need 50, 50 votes plus a tie, tie-breaking vote by the VP to get it passed. And, you know, assuming 100% Republican opposition, which is what has been so far. So it does look promising that it's going to get through. And so because of that, I do want to sort of just talk through a few of the items in there that are of particular importance to us and certainly will impact families, single adults, households that we help through our agency. So a big one is additional food support. The proposal, the President Biden has proposed extending the 15% increase to CalFresh benefits, SNAP benefits nationally through September, instead of having those, that expansion or increase expire in June, and then investing another $3 billion to help women, infants, and children secure food. So that's through the WIC program that's administered by the Department of Public Health. And then also, not unlike some of the partnerships we've forged with local restaurants to deliver food to our residents in our hotels and to provide food support for seniors who are, who should stay in their homes, the President's proposing funding to increase partnerships with restaurants to provide food to needy Americans and to assist laid-off restaurant workers trying to get back into the workplace. Something that was missing in the prior stimulus acts, but was significant for us, is $350 billion in general cash support aid for states and localities and schools. You know, we're facing locally a significant budget deficit that will present on, we have presented in the past, will present on today. And that support will, will go a long way towards helping us close our gap, as well as the state of California, support not only COVID implementation, but also just general operations. Beefed-up stimulus payment, adding $1,400 to eligible recipients. So the direct payment will be a total of 2,000. So the 600 that was approved in the prior, and then 1,400. And then households with mixed immigration status would be eligible for this, which is also significant. Enhanced unemployment assistance, so boosting the $300 weekly enhancement to 400 a week, and extending the payments along with the pandemic unemployment programs through September. Everything seems to be tracking through September. The FEMA reimbursement, which I'll talk about in a second, FEMA reimbursement to hotels is 100% through September. These stimulus act proposals also appear to be tracking towards September, which the end of September happens to be the end of the federal fiscal year, which is, and hopefully will coincide with the end of this pandemic, knock on wood. And then the last piece, and it's a biggie, especially in San Francisco, is rental assistance and eviction moratorium. So it's extending the federal eviction moratorium to the end of September, again, consistent with the other provisions, and providing $25 billion nationwide in rental assistance for low and moderate income households who have lost their jobs during the pandemic. And then another $5 billion to states and localities to help, help us assist those who are at risk of homelessness. Just to give you a sense of sort of the conditions in San Francisco and kind of how they line up with those priorities as laid out by the President, as of late January, there were over 341,000 unduplicated open unemployment claims with a San Francisco address, so 341,000. That's a, we have a population of about 840,000 these days. So 341,000 filings among that is obviously significant and way larger than any, on a number of unemployment claims in recent history. UC Berkeley didn't, and so that's unemployment. But then if you look at, at sort of, kind of the ramifications of such massive unemployment is, of course, ability to pay rent for those who are renters and unemployed. UC Berkeley did an estimate that about 33,000 San Francisco tenant households with a COVID-related job loss, about half of those household lost at least half their income, and about half of them were already considered low income. And 100, and, and one-third prior to COVID were considered rent burdened, which means they pay a higher-than-average percent of their income in rent. And now two-thirds of those households are rent burdened. So, you know, the initiatives, the proposals that are later laid out in the President's stimulus, obviously, you know, are directly in line with some of the needs we have in San Francisco, and we look forward to that passage of that. So if you recall, in late February, there was a federal relief bill that had $25 billion in emergency rental assistance. California's share of that is about 2.6 billion, and San Francisco's share is 56 million in rental assistance eviction prevention, which is a significant amount, and will enable us to reach, literally, you know, I would think, almost all the households who are, who are experiencing that rental burden and potential eviction. That money will go directly to the Mayor's Office of Housing and Community Development. We, of course, work hand-in-hand with them on, on a number of their initiatives. And we've already been in touch regarding how we, as HSA, can partner to ensure that those dollars go to households, families, single adults, seniors who are most in need and who are already connected with HSA. So hopefully, we can get some interviews there. And then the County Welfare Directors Association has $100 million budget proposal, again, around housing, looking around a flexible pot of funds to get the county to get to court our households and families who are, who are in need. You know, we really fear sort of this bubble, or maybe not a bubble, a cliff happening at the end of September when rents come due, the eviction prevention or eviction protection is gone, and we want to make sure our households remain housed. So within our divisions, just a few items, again, since we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago. In our Economic Support Self-Sufficiency Division, we are preparing once again to launch the 2021 free tax prep season and in conjunction with our Working Families Credit Program. You know, as in years past, it's a local coalition of nonprofits organized by the United Way, and we offer free tax prep services to low-income households. And to really, important piece, most important, is to help them enroll in all the federal, state, and local earned income tax credit, childcare tax credit programs to allow those families to reduce their tax burden and even get money back in most cases. And we also, of course, have the Local Working Families Credit, which provides a $250 of local dollars to tax filers who have children. And then new this year, I think I announced this, or mentioned this last month, is the I-10 filers, which, which are basically, are primarily working undocumented and immigrant households that don't have social security numbers, but they do play, pay taxes and qualify for both the Local Working Families Credit and also the state EITC program, not the federal, but the state. So your undocumented residents in San Francisco can, can benefit, or working on docs can benefit just as citizens can to the state and local, which is fantastic news. In the Administrative Division, of course, we're finalizing our budget to present to the, to submit to the Mayor's Office, and that's our item today, and the reason for having this special meeting. So much more detail on that. And then also, within our HR, or out of, out of our HR division, but affecting the agency wide, is our Racial Equity Action Plan was published and submitted to the city's Office of Racial Equity and published onto our site, website. And really, it's, it's a three-year roadmap, a very comprehensive plan, over 100 pages, to address racial disparities within San Francisco Human Services Agency's workforce, includes strategies that we developed and implemented under the leadership of our Office of Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging. We have a number of budget initiatives, one significant budget initiative regarding staffing for that, that office, as well as other activities we want to see rolled out. Just sort of at the highest level, some highlights for the plan focuses on hiring and recruitment process improvements, looking at expanding our recruitment efforts to do more active recruiting in diverse communities, creating more equitable hiring practices to ensure that folks don't fall out early and standardize our onboarding processes so that everyone who comes into our agency is equipped with the same tools to succeed. Another area is looking at opportunities for staff development and advancement. So creating a formal structure for staff to get mentorship, to get other, to get supportive supervision, additional assistance, access to learning to advance in their careers, hopefully advancing their careers within our agency. And then another area, and an important one, is around organizational culture and fostering a culture of inclusion and belonging, you know, working to develop, working together to develop that organizational culture, creating things like shared decision-making structures, supporting employee, employee resource groups, employee support groups, and participating, you know, and shared learning about racial equity. Of course, there's a lot more components to the plan, those sort of touch on a few of the highlights. And then in our Family and Children's Services Division, just an update on our resource families. We have, one of the issues we've been grappling with is COVID-positive kids in care and resource families, foster parents who, I would be, are concerned if their foster children have COVID. And so we're working with one of our foster family agencies, Alternative Family Service, to get two resource families who will take minors who are COVID-positive and who will, you know, will be specially trained to protect themselves and take care of kids who, who get exposed to COVID-19. We're working with them on that. And then the foster, foster parent or resource family recruitment campaign that we talked about last month, or I talked about last month, we've already had lots of clicks on social media. We're already getting lots of interest. You know, it's a really, I think, an innovative campaign, as I said last month, and we're really hoping it bears a lot of fruit and positive results for getting more resource families in the city. And then I'll conclude with reminding you that February is Black History Month, and it really gives us as an agency, I think, a special opportunity to recognize contributions of our Black African-American staff and to the, and their contributions to the work of HSA, and, and also to honor past Black African-American employees who've made significant contributions to the agency. We had a great event last year that was in person. Unfortunately, this year, our event will be virtual. But it will, we are going to have an event, and it'll be on February 25th. The mayor has already agreed to attend, make some remarks, and commissioners, you, of course, are all invited to attend, and you haven't already seen that announcement for that, we will shortly. And then also, we do have a lot of smaller events within our divisions. Our Family and Children's Services Division will be having a Black History Month event celebration on February 24th in the morning at 10:30. And you commissioners, of course, are also welcome to attend that, and information will be sent out on that as well. And so with that, I will conclude, and of course, open to comments, questions from you commissioners.
Any questions from members of the commission, Trent?
Drew the chair, James McCray. I, I just want to commend the city and the work that we do or did, continue to do to support the Moscone and other centers around this city. Being in that group who's eligible, I have had a shot, and, and I was just very thankful for, for how the whole process went and how very excited and upbeat and warm the people serving the community were onsite. So I just want to commend publicly all, all of us and say thank you, Mr. Rohr, for getting the team in shape. It was wonderful.
Thank you, Commissioner McCray. I actually shared your positive feedback to the Health Director on our call a couple of days ago, and I will reiterate that. They've done a really good job in partnership with a lot of, a lot of city agencies. Thank you for that.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, moving on then to item five, the presentation of the February 2021 Employee of the Month, who is Dina Austin, an SIU investigator. And I believe on this Zoom call are several of her siblings, Ana, Marco, and Harold, and possibly some nieces and nephews. So all listen in, because we're talking about your sister and your aunt here. The commission is pleased to announce that Dina Austin, an SIU investigator and deployed disaster service worker, is the February 2021 Employee of the Month. Dina is a dedicated and thoughtful investigator. She cares deeply about her clients' well-being, and her work is always of superior quality. Dina provides through thorough investigations with care and humility towards her clients. She is very deliberate, taking time to get to know her clients and explain the reasons for the investigation. For the last 11 months, Dina has been deployed as a disaster service worker for the emergency housing effort. She was one of the first disaster service workers to be deployed to the Department Operations Center, also known as DOC, at the beginning of the pandemic, and has been part of that effort ever since. She started her deployment by helping prep shelter-in-place hotels for activation, as well as setting up a congregate site from scratch. She came in with a little get-this-done attitude with zero precedent and little guidance. Dina took on this huge responsibility with ease and confidence, as if she had done this exact work her whole life. She worked incredibly long hours, taking calls and visiting sites at all hours. She worked tirelessly to ensure the community-based organizations were comfortable with operating each site before moving on to her next assignment. Dina was incredibly self-reliant and dependable, making it possible for the DOC leaders to focus on other areas of the emergency housing effort. She was able to communicate effectively with a wide range of personalities, and her calm demeanor and hard work ethic set the tone for her sites. Dina's quick thinking, pragmatism, and problem-solving skills were essential during the early days of sheltering homeless, vulnerable San Franciscans. Dina worked as an onsite monitor, and then when there were no shows, and was quickly promoted to site manager lead. She is now on the demobilization team wherein she visits shelter-in-place hotels and works closely with the community-based organizations and other contracted services to have rooms cleaned and returned to their original state. She is willing to fit in anywhere needed in the response and do the work of many. She is always ready to take on special projects and has gone above and beyond the responsibilities of every position. She is a true team player, offering to be on call or show up at after-hours incident so that her teammates who live farther away can stay home and avoid commuting into the city. Her compassion and dedication are always evident. Once when there was a traumatic situation at a shelter-in-place hotel site, she showed up, no questions asked, to help the onsite staff recover and move forward to keep serving our clients. The shelter-in-place hotels would not be the success they are today without Dina's essential contributions. It is with gratitude and pride that we award Dina with the February Employee of the Month Award. Congratulations, Dina.
Thank you.
Yay!
Thank you so much. I just want to thank the commission, and first of all, Vlad, for nominating me, and for the commission for selecting me, and Trent, for your leadership. You are always at the forefront when it comes to disasters in San Francisco. And I do value and appreciate the opportunities that we all have to serve and volunteer and work in these programs and these disasters, because it enriches our lives in so many ways. I have learned a lot working at the CCC. It's hard, I'm very much. I was trying not to cry. And I'm very grateful to work for this department. I want to say something in Spanish, because my, my nieces and nephews and family from Guatemala and Mexico are. Les quiero dar las gracias a todos por su apoyo. Porque ustedes mi familia son las personas que me han hecho la persona que yo soy ahora. Muchísimas gracias y los amo con todo mi corazón. And in closing, I just want to share this recognition with everyone who works at the CCC, because this is not something that I was able to do on my own. Particularly Kira Barrera, who is my supervisor at the CCC. She is awesome in every possible way. She has guided me. She has shared her knowledge and her wisdom. And she is one of the best persons at the CCC. Also Jocelyn and John Patton, who are the bomb there. And they are, they really are. It's amazing how we've become a family at the CCC with many of the people there. And now that people are telecommuting more, sometimes when I go there and I don't see people, I actually miss them. So it's, it's, it's a very, it's a hectic environment, but at the same time, it's extremely rewarding. And being able to help and house the people that need shelter during this pandemic and a labor of love, not just for our program, but for the people at DPH, HSH, and DPW, who are also working at the COVID Command Center. And I am very humbled and honored by this recognition, and I appreciate it. And I am very humbled and honored by this recognition and I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Uh Trent, do you have any comments?
Thanks, President Khan. Yeah, congratulations, Dina. Um so well deserved and you know, you really, you hit the nail on the head and a few of your remarks. I mean, um it has, it is such a neat team that's really come together and and uh. You know, when we launched this, you know, I don't think HSA knew a whole lot about renting hotels and. Filling them up and equipping them and making sure the guests uh you know are comfortable and and. So it naturally requires a ton of flexibility and creativity and and certainly hard work. Um and I just think you're the embodiment of that and I love reading the chats, you know, there's so many. Comments, we love you, Dina, you're so proud of you, you know, and and so it just shows that your colleagues. Um value so much and really recognizing your fantastic work and. I do see a few CCC folks on Kira and Jocelyn and you guys are just doing such a great and if I missed others, I'm sorry that they're right in the middle of my screen. Um you guys are doing such a fantastic job and I'm so happy we could recognize you, Dina, and really recognize the entire. HSA branch for what they're doing. It's just amazing work and and it's hard work. And so, Dina, thank you. Uh you made everyone tear up, including me on the call, so. I'm I'm really pleased we could do this for you. Congrats. So well deserved.
And I might add, I saw something in the chat, the tail end of something that. I believe it said that I want to grow up just like you. My guess is that that may have been from one of your nieces or nephews. But I'm not sure because I only saw part of it. So thank you, Dina.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. And thank you for all the people who have been role models. Throughout the time that I've been working at um HSH, HSA. I always confuse them, which this year it's going to be twenty nine years that I've been working.
Oh, boy.
I started after kindergarten.
There is any, and you're funny, too. That's good. Um, okay, so moving on.
Thanks, Dana.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Moving on to uh item six on our agenda. Which is the consent calendar. Do any of my fellow commissioners want to remove an item for individual discussion?
Mister Chair, I move the uh acceptance of the consent calendar.
Is there a second? A second to the motion? I'll make the second. So moved. George, are you still on with us?
I see Commissioner saying, yes.
Sure. George is on. He's just muted. George, there you go.
Yeah, all right. Now I'd like to call on Commissioner Yamazaki, who's at, it's not part of our agenda, but is asked to address the commission at this point.
Thank you very much, uh President Khan. Uh I'm reverting to my dreaded role of nitpicker. And um the reason that uh I am. Making these remarks at this time is because the memorandum. To the commission regarding the budget is addressed to. And I'll read the uh entity. Benefits and Family Support Commission. Now, it's my understanding. That the Human Services Commission is a charter commission of the city and county of San Francisco. And named as such in the charter. Uh I I just am. A little bit nonplussed by the address uh of the memorandum. And I believe that although there would be no. Damaging substantive effect to uh multiple commission designations. Of what is in the charter, the Human Services Commission. I believe the better practice would be to clarify this. I therefore respectfully request. Our hardworking, efficient secretary. Uh to take whatever steps are necessary, including consultation. With the city attorney's office and procurement of an opinion, if necessary. To clarify this matter. As to what the name of this entity, this commission. On which five of us serve at this time is properly designated.
Commissioner Yamazaki, uh this remains the Human Services Commission. As you correctly noted, it's in the charter. The only way to change the name is through a ballot initiative. Um the addressing to the wrong commission name was was uh a staff error and I should have caught that before sending it on to you. My apologies. Um it's the Human Services Commission. The the department name has changed to benefits and family support, but but you. As a body are still charged with overseeing human services delivery in San Francisco. Under whatever name the department may be and the Human Services Agency continues to exist. Um uh and you all continue to be the the mayoral point and policy body over human services. So. Commissioner, I apologize for that mistake. We'll correct the memo to reflect Human Services Commission.
Thanks for that clarification. I.
Thank you.
I I'm certainly not a critical of um whoever um initiated this. Because to me, it's all very confusing when when we change our names without um. Apparently going through uh all of the necessary hoops. But as far as the uh the commission is concerned, I appreciate that of. Clarification and that reassurance that we are in fact and in name. And in law, the Human Services Commission of the city and county of San Francisco.
That is correct.
Thank you, Commissioner Yamazaki. I think this was something that I I sort of brought up a month ago. I was confused about verbiage. And uh I'm glad it's, this is the same kind of issue that I had and I'm glad that it's uh been explained. Thank you very much, Trent. Okay, moving on to item seven, our commission business action items. Uh consideration and possible action regarding the Department of Benefits and Family Support. And the Human Service Agency fiscal year twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two. And twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three budget proposal. Any comments? Uh Dan, are you there?
I am.
Okay.
So we have a a brief presentation. I think Elizabeth will run the slide deck. Um can you put up the first slide? What uh I will do is walk through. The uh the background on this year's budget and I will also um talk about the financial data. The overarching financial data. Um Trent will talk a little bit about. Um a few major initiatives that we have uh for the coming year. Before I I start, I'd like to say this is, of course, as you know, the second of two presentations and the first one, we really reviewed the budget context in some detail. And talked a little bit about some of the issues we've been dealing with. Um the bottom line here is that this is a very tough year for city revenues. The city is. Projecting a four hundred and eleven million dollar deficit in the budget year. And close to a two hundred and fifty million dollar deficit in the budget year uh plus one. Um and as a result, the mayor's office has asked city agencies to reduce. Discretionary general funds by seven point five percent. In the case of the Human Services Agency and and that is uh benefits and family support. Um disability and aging services and O E C. That's a combined total of seven point three million dollars that uh is meant to be reduced from our. Uh discretionary general fund budget. So we have done that in this budget. Um we are in a situation where as a a human services agency. We are also um uh likely to receive considerably higher. Um revenues in a number of areas than were budgeted for the current year's budget. And as a result. We are able to cover the reduction without reducing. Uh staffing or services uh to clients or CBO contracts. Uh that's the good news. Um so the particular areas in which we've seen increases are are the major um. The major programs overseen by this commission, Cal Works revenues are up, medical administration revenues are up, CalFresh. Uh revenues are up. Uh also on the DOS side, um IHSS administration uh revenue are up. Um so what we are going to do here is we're going to compare the current year budget uh from with our three normal uh views uh program. Um revenue category and uh and category of expenditure. And then we're going to talk about um some initiatives and issues we're working through for next year. And I should say that one of the things that has happened this year. Is uh we have had some additional revenues and some. Uh savings in the current year's budget and we are working with the mayor's office and the controller's office. To um to move some of those savings and additional revenues from the current year. Into the next year uh to, in the case of family and children's services, to avoid reductions next year. And in the case of E S S S to support some special programming. And Trent will talk about our proposals in those areas and then we will both be available to answer questions. May we go to the next slide? Listen to it. So as I mentioned above, we face a seven point three million dollar reduction target, which we have. Uh met with increased revenue. Maybe go to the next slide. So on this slide, um we we show our total budget and as you can see, um the budget for the budget year or the proposed budget for the budget year is. Um a tiny bit larger than for the current year. Uh basically, uh there has been a little bit of inflation uh that that we've covered. Um and we have shifted a few things around, but the budget uh next year is very similar to the budget this year. If you go through the various. Uh slices of the pie, you'll see in general that the percentages are more or less exactly the same or in some cases differ by one. Uh so this is a very uh stable budget. Um. And uh and as I said, we have, we have patched things together to some extent with one time money or money sliding forward from. Uh the current year to the next year, but we we have held the budget very stable. Can we go to the next slide? The next slide compares uh FTE or positions uh in the two years, the current year and the budget year. And again, as you can see, there is a change of one FTE. Uh as as we go forward, if you look at the individual slices, you'll see that the number of FTE in each. Part of the agency is extremely similar. We have had some minor shifting from area to area. As um as Trent mentioned during his in his report. One of the things that we have done here is we've made a little bit of a investment in. Uh our diversity, equity and inclusion, inclusion and belonging office. We've done that actually by internal shifting. So. Uh you can see that the program support area has four more FTE uh in the in the budget year than it does in the current year. That that's as a result of internal shifting to uh to give that. Uh that function, the staff that it needs to really get going on its work. May we go to the next slide? Uh this is the slide where we look at our sources of revenue and again, what you see is um it is very similar. There have been a few shifts in this area and this is something, of course, you would expect in. In a year uh with as much in the way of volatile. Uh funding swings as we've had in in California and in the city. Uh one of the areas to call to your attention is on state revenues. As you can see, the state revenues actually go down in the budget year. Um we do have a some additional revenue in the CalFresh area and the CalWorks area. Um we do have additional revenue in the medical area, which uh appears in the federal funds bucket. So in the state bucket, the um the source of the decline is that in the current year. The legislature approved an expenditure to backfill backfill reductions in realignment revenue. We were anticipating fairly big uh reductions in realignment revenue at about the fifteen percent level. Um those reductions actually didn't materialize. So our realignment revenue, although down, was down only a tiny bit. In the current year. Um and and the legislature had said that that its backfilling of expected realignment revenue loss. Was only going to be a one year phenomenon. So. This, the legislature backfilled the realignment loss in the current year with state general funds. Those state general funds are no longer in the budget for next year. But they have been replaced by improved realignment revenues. So we are whole there. It's just the the revenue is coming to us in a different way. Uh but when we put it all together, um what we've got is an increase in federal revenue. Puts and takes in the state revenue and a small reduction in general fund operating. You can see down near the bottom of the chart in that purple slice. And and that is a reflection of the uh the seven point three million dollar reduction. And all of the reduction doesn't come in in this particular budget. There's some in the DOS budget and some in the O E C E budget, but. But uh but there is a little bit of reduction in the general fund operating budget here. Let's go to the next slide. And and then the the last slide here is uh expenditures by category. Again, what you will see is a very stable picture. Um some uh some very uh minor changes from area to area. In the current year, we did have a nine million dollar. Um COVID sick leave program that we administered and that was in the aid assistance budget. Uh as you can see, the aid assistance budget is smaller in the budget year than. In the current year, that's primarily due to the ending of that program. Um. But but you know, it's it's a similar pattern. The, as you can see, almost half of the budget goes to employee costs, salary and fringe benefits. And the percentages of the other uh elements of the program are very similar from year to year. As I said at the beginning, um we have had some meaningful savings in. Um in our uh jobs now and affiliated programs during. The current year, we've been working with the mayor. We've been working with the mayor's office to repurpose expenditures to create some special benefits programs for next year. Trent will talk about those. And we have also had some additional revenues this year that we're working with the mayor's office and controller's office to shift into the budget year to avoid funding problems mainly in the area of family and children's services. And by doing that, we're able to keep those programs whole as well. So let's move to the next slide and Trent will speak about some of our initiatives.
So let me start with our COVID budget. You'll see on this slide, it references COVID-19 shelters, but these are hotels as well as at least one congregant shelter, but mostly our hotels. We call it the alternative housing system. The reference does shelters here simply because it's not considered permanent housing. It's temporary for our guests. So the budget will include continuing operating these shelters into the budget year as Dan mentioned. But we're also have a very big demobilization effort that HSA is lead on. The Department of Home Assistance and Support of Housing is lead on rehousing people. We're lead on demobilizing hotels, which means turning them over back over to their owner in the condition that we it'll be a big effort and certainly costs associated. I do want to point out, though, that that at the beginning of the pandemic, the FEMA reimbursement rates for our hotel or alternative housing system was 75% and the state and county had to make up the 20 25%. Once Biden took office, he shifted that FEMA reimbursement retroactively to 100%, which means that there will be significant savings that we're still trying to calculate, but significant savings as a result of county money that we had anticipated spending on that 25%. That's great news. On the food coordination side, feeding, we're going to continue. Of course, our feed, our food support investments, which include plates, includes support for the food bank, includes targeting neighborhoods and populations that were disproportionately impacted by the pandemic, specifically in the southeast neighborhoods, as well as in Mission, Outer Mission. And then, of course, the population most at risk, which is the older adults, disabled adults in San Francisco, continue to support their food as well. We also are moving the food coordination unit into or under the Human Services Agency and outside of the COVID Command Center, which will require us to hire some temporary positions to be able to operate that. Quite a large operation of you know, 30 plus million dollars. And so we need staff to oversee that to make sure it continues to roll out well for our communities. So our non-COVID investments in workforce development, as Dan mentioned, there are significant one time savings. Basically budgeted dollars in the current year that we weren't able to spend. And largely they are from, Elizabeth, if you can switch this line. Largely, they are from our Jobs Now program. If you recall, in October, November of this of 2020, the mayor announced a significant expansion of jobs. And the idea back then was we were in a, we were not in a surge. We felt, you know, the economy was was on the verge of getting back to somewhat state of normalcy. And so the mayor wanted to help support small, medium sized businesses, get off the ground and reopen. And we wanted to, of course, support individuals to get back into the workforce. And so she included in our budget significant expansion of jobs. Well, about a month after she announced that, we hit surge three and everything shut down, which means, which meant that, you know, small businesses were not reopening or were limiting their their employment. And then, of course, the job availability for folks to get back in the labor market just didn't exist. And so we are proposing to use that money in a number of ways in the current year, as well as bleeding over into the budget year, which is why it's on here. And you can see on the slide, things like addressing the digital divide that exists in San Francisco, low income or lower income households who don't have the same access to broadband, to to computers. We're increasingly reliant on this in our society, not only in our COVID, but but post-COVID. So it's important to support that through purchases of equipment and other supports for our households so they can plug in. On was intentional. Eviction prevention, I mentioned in my report, significant eviction prevention investments by the state and the feds. We also are looking at filling those gaps by providing support to households that may not be covered by one of those funding streams. I mentioned our working families credit, we're looking to increase that potentially. We're looking to assist our undocumented households who may not be eligible for certain benefits coming from the feds, providing cash support to families with undocumented household members who aren't benefiting from the federal investments. And then as part of our Jobs Now program, expanding what we call our Career Pathways Initiative, which is full time city employment for successful graduates of our public service trainee program and jobs. Now, we've proposed another 30 positions using these funds. And then, of course, the expansion that the mayor announced in the fall of 2020 will be built into our budget for 21 22. So we we will still be able to expand to support individuals reentering the labor market and getting jobs, as well as businesses who are trying to reopen or newly open post pandemic. So in our family children's services, next slide, Elizabeth. We have mentioned the transition out of our 40 waiver and into the new federal funding structure through Family First Transition Act, which will result in a loss of federal dollars for for San Francisco. We have a plan to continue or to continue financial support and not sort of have that that financial burden be sort of felt within a single budget year and utilizing Family First Transition Act funding through this coming budget year and subsequent years. We are constricting a little bit our our spending in family children's services, holding positions vacant longer. We do, as you know, have a significantly lower out of home placement, foster care placement caseload than we have historically. We're at about between five and 600 kids who are in who are in out of home placement. We have a staffing level that was built and a staffing structure that was built on the out of home placement case that was much higher. So we're, we can hold positions vacant and we feel not impact services to our at risk kids and families. We're exploring new funding sources within the context of the Family First Prevention Service Act. It's F F P S A is the acronym. It allows, one of the positives of F F P S A is allowing for federal funding to support prevention services, which the 4E funding did not allow for. And so we are looking at our programs to see which might qualify for those prevent, under the prevention category in F F P S A and be able to draw down federal funds for that. And then we continue to have needs around domestic violence, support of our families, domestic violence. Sadly, and unfortunately, likely increased due to the pandemic and the stay at home, and it puts kids and victims in harm's way. And we have significant resources already into this, supporting this need, and we're looking to expand that further through trade offs within the M C S budget. So next slide, please. In our benefit family support department, some of our initiatives also under HSA, the broader foundational agency. I mentioned in my report, the racial equity work. Some of the more specific initiatives under our racial equity work that will require any dollars, which is building out the D E I B team to seven F T E. And that's we're doing that through moving positions or vacant positions around within our budget. Developing racial equity training for staff, managers, boards, and you all commissioners. Looking at diverse recruitment strategies, which I mentioned earlier, and then alternatives to employee discipline, that's really more a strength based restorative justice approach to further strengthen our employees' abilities to do their jobs. Also in administration, 170 Otis Street, our big building where our commission auditorium is is not meeting current seismic safety standards, as I've mentioned before. But we are pushing the moving costs out into year two of our two year budget to fiscal year 22 23, really to give us a longer runway to assess our long term service delivery strategy and what our offices might look like in terms of providing support to to our clients. Looking at potentially neighborhood based offices, assessing the need for a large eight story headquarters. And we're just not ready to make decisions on what relocation might look like. We really want to take us kind of take time to step back and see what would be the best delivery, best design of our service delivery system. And then that will inform what physical plants we need, physical locations. Undoubtedly, it's going to require dollars, which is why it's budgeted, but you know, new leases, one time dollars, setup of offices, things like that. And then lastly, substitutions, so not not hiring or adding new staff, but continuing to build out our communications support through a way of new positions from other parts of the agency and changing existing positions within the budget, some of which cost money if a position is is a higher paid position than one that the one that we replaced. And I believe that is it for my program highlights. We go to slide 11, which I can talk to as well. It's the timeline, same timeline as I presented in the last commission hearing. We're now in February 11th in our second meeting, which hopefully this body will approve the budget to submit to the mayor on February 22nd. And then we have several months of discussion and revenue reprojection to look at what ultimately will be included in June 1st. And we, as usual, past years, continue to keep this commission informed of significant changes that may be occurring within that budget that might differ from what we are, what was presented here for your approval. And then we have our board budget hearings in June, along with the the budget legislative analyst report. And then the board vote would be in July. So I'll conclude there and Dan and I are available for questions, should you have any. Commissioners, are there any questions? Commissioner Khan, you are muted. In case you're speaking. Commissioner Khan, you're on mute.
Through through the chair. Very good, very good job, very good overview of it the second time getting it before us. I appreciate it very much. I would want to ask Mr. Kaplan, what what were the places that you're most satisfied? That in light of the $7 million push upon the budget that that you've been able to to get strength, that you've been able to get the agency in a stronger position even with with the changes? Where are you feeling most satisfied about that in this budget?
Well, you know, this is this would work differently from from county to county. In San Francisco, where we have tended to invest fairly heavily in in human services programs. We do have a certain amount of flexibility. We have a relatively large general fund budget, and that allows us to move local support from program area to program area as needed. And in better years, we make use of that for expansion where needed. In this year, we made use of that same capacity to avoid reductions. We we were able to get additional state revenues and in some cases additional federal revenues in because of the moment we're in in the economy. And we move general funds around to shore up holes and to keep all the programs together. And and, you know, we we can do that because of the amount of local funds we have in the budget. So we essentially let go of some local funds, but backfilled with state and federal revenue. I think the other thing that in some ways, my budget team and our program team should be most proud of is the flexibility and the continual updating of their thinking that they did with regard to spending during this year and and the opportunities that lower spending in some areas and higher revenue in other areas in the current year gave us to deal with problems and to create additional programming next year. And, you know, we have been working closely with the mayor's office and the controller's office on that. But I think that folks have have done a good job laying out what's what's been going on with our programs and what the demand will be in in the upcoming budget period. And we've gotten a very receptive response at this point with regard to that. So I think it's it's been, you know, a situation where we've taken a difficult financial situation. And and I think we've done as well with it as we can. And, you know, we've we've managed to hold things together on one hand and increase programming in at least one major area in another. That's great. And this is
Good, good, thank you. Yeah, right. Oh, yeah.
Well, Dan, you've done as usual, although it's not taken for granted at all, a wonderful job. Thank you for your presentation. Is there any public comment? Seeing there is none, I'd like to ask for a motion.
Maybe give a little bit more time for public comment away. And I did see
It was one question.
That might might have comments. So sorry, just give maybe 30 seconds, given the virtual world for public comment.
You saw one question, Trent?
I think there is at least one person for public comment. Is it if I'm wrong, Carl, I'm actually looking at you.
Yes, I have a question. You know, under the minimum compensation ordinance, there's a cost of living adjustment on July 1st and also a 50 cent an hour raise for I H S S home care workers. Has that funding been put into the budget for the cost of living adjustment for city funded nonprofit workers and for I H S S home care workers?
I'm sorry, it's not showing on my screen. Who who's actually speaking now?
Oh, I'm sorry, Carl Kramer, San Francisco Living Wage Coalition.
Okay, thank you very much, Carl. Dan, can you answer that or Trent?
I can, yes. So so Carl is referring to the minimum compensation ordinance, which which increased not for profit provider wages a couple of years ago. And it also increased the I H S S home care worker wages. The mechanism is a little bit different from the two. And so the budget and it's in the DOS budget as opposed to the the Human Services budget. But the the DOS budget does reflect the increase in the I H S S worker budget. The mechanism for the not for profit providers was a was a one time increase. And there was another bit of an increase this year. And then the subsequent year increases are meant to be covered by inflationary increases or cost of doing business increases, as they're called. The mayor's office has not, at this point, made a decision about the amount of cost of doing business increase that will be included in this budget. And so that is not reflected in the budget before you. So I H S S wages are in, but they appear on the DOS side. The not for profit increases for inflation are not in at this point and may be added later.
Are there any other comments? Are there any other comments? I believe we need to make a motion to approve this to send on to the mayor's office.
So move.
Is there a second? All in favor? Okay, all in favor? I. So moved. Moving on to public comment. Is there any comments from the public at this time regarding matters under the jurisdiction of the Human Service Commission? Hearing of none, our meeting is adjourned. Can I have a motion for adjournment? Second?
Second.
Okay, I don't even think we need that, actually. Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Good job, everybody. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Or, Mr. Kaplan, laying out that money for us. Appreciate it. Thank you. Have a great day, everyone.